Here.
Kelly.
Present.
Cisco.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Present.
All, awesome. All right, everyone, please stand to watch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands one nation under God, in this court with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, who are you? Well, hold on a second. Does anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Liz Martin, I believe, is speaking during your presentation, correct?
Yes.
So then, Ms. Allison Green?
Yeah, I'm with Liz.
Okay.
That was her speech.
All right, well, we'll take those thoughts into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, before you, you have the meeting minutes from August 4, 2022. Please review them at this time. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the minutes? Having done, I will change the motion to approve the minutes as presented. So, comments? Ms. Park.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Cisco.
Hi.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fordham.
Hi.
Sit tight.
Sit tight.
All right, so next we have an appointment here. So, swear again, new police officer. For us, if you please rise. We have Mr. Rush Rudolph. He resides Pinker Grove. We won't hold that against him. But he began his career with Hollywood, Florida, police department in 2000. And he spent his last seven years with the Norfolk Southern Railroad in Chicago. So, we're happy to have him now as our new police officer. So, we'll get to the swearing in part, and then we'll make him sing his favorite song.
Okay, which right here, repeat after me. I do a song that swear. That's what the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. Now faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the police officer. Of the Village of Hampshire, Illinois. According to the best of the. Eventually she's silent.
We're all giving attention to getting his left-handed. Man, I'm already, I'm already digging. I say you, Mike V. You're right here. Oh, yeah, here, I gotta give you the badge. Ask Officer Paradise how that went the last time. So, was this intentional? Did you pick purple out on purpose?
Uh, yeah, it was mixed. It was.
So, yes.
Yes.
Okay, because that's our color. So, tell us a little bit about yourself, if you don't mind.
Uh, I started up there, started in my year, being a police officer in 2000 with the Hollywood Police Department down in Florida, South Florida. Moved up here, got involved with the railroad, and finally got to come up here, so.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Glad to be able to.
Ms. J. Green.
Oh, and this is my son, Corbin Rudolph. Gary D. Wright, so just entered the second grade, so very, very excited.
Awesome. We're happy to have you.
Yep.
And you've got a lot of support here tonight, as you see.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of other reasons, too, so. Congratulations. Thanks.
You're gonna buy them stuff down at work.
But you could charge it to the.
All right, up next, Chief Thompson?
Okay, we have an award that I'd like the board to be a part of, and this is our Officer of the Year Award. And just give you a brief summary of it. It's back in, or actually, 2020 and 2021 proved to be a difficult time for us all. I'm sure you'll all agree. COVID still unrest and the anti-police movement. However, welcoming Officer Cody Grinley was a bright spot. Cody came to us fully trained from another department in February, in February 2020, and was eager to do whatever was needed. Shortly after he arrived, he became, it became apparent to me that the stamping at the high school for the upcoming school year was going to be a challenge. Cody stepped up and was placed in the SRO program. Throughout 2021, Cody continuously maintained a high level of activity both in and out of his primary role as an SRO officer. End of year summary showed his efforts led the department in almost all measurable areas: arrests, citations, and reports. Although there isn't just one thing that stands out during this time, I believe consistency at a higher level is more notable. That's definitely what Cody did. Congratulations, Cody.
They don't smile.
She's, there's a smile.
Hey, Chief, we gotta work on them smiling when they get in work. Not a smile when they.
Well, thank you for your contributions to the village, and thanks for your contributions to Hampshire High School. We outspoken very highly of your, highly of you and your time. And I, I always witnessed you going the extra mile, and then I did see you smile yesterday when you got in the accelerator to go after that guy that was speeding.
Can we get a picture with the chief and the mayor and our.
Yes. Oh, man.
Absolutely. Join the shit show.
Yeah, but your side, so see. Stand in the middle there with Hampshire on the nature.
You don't get out of this.
Obviously, you're in the middle.
There it is. There's a smile. How about handshake?
All right, we can repeat it again now here. Go ahead.
This bitch's computer has got a mind of its own.
Gonna spittle four times. You could use it all up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
I'd be able to see that, but. Thank you so much.
All right, so if you've been here for any police-related banners, now's your time to. Stay. You're all welcome to stay. But, but we don't think anything less should be of this place.
I applaud you guys. See you later.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Edgins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have a presentation on a proposed development of an assisted living facility by Ms. Martin, who is a Hampshire resident. Josh and I met with her earlier this week, and I'd like to make a brief presentation to tell you about our plans.
She did that with.
It's true. It is?
I had.
You just got a boot off, right?
She just.
I had a boot off for a while.
Same boot?
Hi, my name is Liz Martin. I'm a resident of Hampshire. I moved here in 2015. I live here, I have three children. They all go to the Hampshire school system. Um, prior to that, I was working in Elgin, a nonprofit assisted living. And I just felt, you know, Hampshire has nothing for seniors. If they, if they need to go in and receive care, they have to go to a city. Who wants to go to a city when you live in the country? You want to stay living in the country, in this environment. All your friends are here. They can come see you. I think it's, it's hard for them, especially if their friends are elderly, to go to Elgin or other cities to travel, to see them, which can lead to social isolation, isolation, and just health problems altogether. So, I propose a. All that. This is what I kind of like it to look like here, to have like a barn-esque look. I'm planning to purchase 30 to 35 acres for this to be placed on. And it would be under three different phases. So, phase one would be the building of the facility, which would house community rooms, 16 memory care suites, 15 assisted living studios, 15 assisted living one-bedroom apartments. And then the next, so this is kind of a. That's the memory care suite. Everything would be private. And they can have, then phase two would be to build little cottages on the same property. So, I would want to start by building six independent senior, senior living cottages. They'd just be two-bedroom, two-bath. They'd have a garage, and they would be maintenance breaks. So, we would have maintenance assistance with any other house needs. If they should need care, they can call to the main facility if there's an emergency, and staff in the main facility can, can attend to them as well. Um, and then phase three would be an animal shelter. So, I think seniors and animals, there's so many benefits in that relationship as far as their mental health, their physical health. Um, I just think that, you know, that's just, especially with cognitive deficits, somebody with Alzheimer's or dementia. An animal is going to bring them back to their childhood animals and bring them back to, you know, actually thinking of memories, and they might be in the dark all, all the time unless there's an animal by them. So, I've used animal therapy in my assisted living. I was working at an Elgin, and we actually fostered animals from the local animal shelter, and it worked out. It was just such a great symbiotic relationship, so. That would be my. Um, this would be private pay. Um, and it would be through rent, donors, and sponsorship is how it would be funded. Everything that goes in would, everything that's earned would go right back into the care of the, of the grounds and of the facilities. There would be also a, a veteran's discount. So, if you're a veteran, you'd be given a monthly discount on your monthly run. And the mission is basically to provide dignified care and socialization for seniors. I'd also like to add that some of the money that is made in our facility would go into a, like a charity fund. So, if a senior should exhaust their, their money, and they, they need extra help, extra help, you know, instead of having them move out because they can't afford it anymore, and since it's private pay, we wouldn't bill Medicare, Medicaid, we would contribute to the rent for them.
Where's this gonna be located?
I'd like, um, there's a piece of land on Allen Road, and that would be a good spot for that. Pardon?
Where in there?
Um, By Trees Unlimited, is that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Here's the again.
And By Trees Unlimited on Allen. Thank you. Yeah.
So, a question for you. You had said you worked in assisted living. For your vision for this, how do you? What is it that you're looking to do here that would up-level the experiences of other places where you've been, and how are, are you taking what you've learned there and offering either a better or a different type of experience here? I think the plan is really cool. I just.
Yeah, so here, it would be governed, like, everything would be governed by the residents that live there. So, what activities do they want to do? I'm not gonna plan their, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, all the input is gonna come from them, what they want to do, what their needs are, what they want to eat. I mean, some places, my other place, they would say, oh, we're gonna eat this, and half of them weren't even eating the meals because they didn't like it. They wanted pot roast or meatloaf or something like that, and they just weren't providing that for them. So, I want to make sure that they have a say-so in their, in everything that happens there, because that is there for them.
I think one of the things you said is really important is the size. It's manageable. You go to, I, I have worked above here for Alzheimer's, so I work with a lot of caregivers and things, but in most of your homes, they're too big. They, they just don't have enough staff. They, you know, they forget about people who don't talk, they haven't seen it firsthand. So, the size you're talking about is very manageable. I think that's really important.
Yeah. And I mean, if, if, if it gets to be where we need to expand in the future, but to start, I think this would fill up right away, and, you know. I just, I really, I, I've been working with seniors. I've been in healthcare since 94. I've been working exclusively with seniors since 2011, and I just, it's a passion of mine. I, I want to make their lives better in any way that I can.
Will you be incorporated in the village?
Hey.
That is.
That would be part of, that would be part of the conversation. This is preliminary, preliminary concept plan. She's just letting us know about her intentions. Could be our intention, and if you were to report this, we'd like you to, of course, answer to the village. But that's, that's something that we could talk about as a plan. Right.
So, I signed up as a speaker and that said no, not speaking, but I said, I can't stop myself. I know Liz hates public speaking, so. Thanks, I'm Allison Green, and I own a company in Dayton called Assisted Living Locators, where I provide what's called referral placement services for seniors and families who are, have come to that crossroads of having a loved one that's really struggling to be at home on their own. Um, everybody would like to stay at home for the most part, but sometimes that's just not possible. Homes aren't accessible. Family members can't be there. We're part of the sandwich generation now where, you know, adult children are finding themselves to be care of their own children and their parents at the same time. And they need, they need help. They can't do it on their own. So, I've also always worked with seniors. I'm also a doctor of audiology. I practiced in Elgin for my last 10 years before I opened this practice. And so, all of my experience and work has been with seniors. When I opened this company about a year and a half ago, it's tough, exactly what this lady was saying, you know, we're taking seniors and we're moving them from homes that they've been in for years and years. I've had families who have lived, these people have been in their homes 60 years or more, and now we're gonna put them in a five-story assisted living where there's 160 apartments, and it just doesn't make sense. The people aren't happy. They don't want like what they call hotel living with long hallways and walking far to the dining room, and they're barely just a number. Um, and so, when Liz told me about this plan, in my, you know, year and a half experience as a senior living advisor, I kept thinking, there's gotta be something different. There's gotta be something better. There's gotta be something where people move to, and it is more home-like. It's where they've lived, you know, it's, it's smaller. It's more personalized. It's more like family. And actually, those are the communities that I gravitate towards when I help these families find a placement for their home, right? The staff is gonna know their name. They're gonna know what's important to them. They're gonna know what they did for a living. They're gonna care about them like they were their own parents. And Liz isn't giving herself enough credit. She is 100% the reason why I have worked with all across the city. My families have been looking for assisted living or independent living. It was really Liz that was leading that community and caring about people. My last resident there said, I, she was very sad. Liz isn't there now, and said, I moved there because of Liz. And I think it's just, it's lacking. It's lacking, and her vision for this small, home-like, personal community is very sly after. Very, very.
We need something like that within the village for sure, because that's been a concern of this quarter. As long as I've been on the board, is we don't have any seniors. And I'm leaving. After being here, you know, generations, and then they get down to a certain age in life where they can't take care of themselves, or they've got health problems, and they have to go somewhere else. So, this is something that's really been good.
I'd also like to add that we will be hosting seniors in the community to join us, too. So, we might have like a Friday night dinner, and we would invite seniors in the community into some of our daily, daily activities as well. Our daily exercise, if they want to join us. We'll have a walking path around the perimeter, so, and then in the winter, we'll do an indoor daily exercise. So, we would invite seniors from the community to utilize the space as well.
I appreciate you coming to speak to us tonight. Does the board have any questions?
If I could just ask, I mean, because we've got a couple of different organizations that work with seniors, some townships, some churches, there are senior organizations. I was just curious if you reached out to any of them yet, just to kind of feel them out and what they thought of the idea, and if, like, as you said, having, inviting them to come to participate in some things.
I have not, because I didn't want to jump ahead of myself if this gets shut down right here, you know. I didn't want to say, oh, I really want to do this, but maybe I'm not. So, but I would like to definitely reach out. Right now, I am the vice president of the Elgin County Tryout, and I know Hampshire pays into that to go to their functions as well. So, I'm used to working seniors in the community and.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
No, I was just gonna say, ask. Thank you for the presentation. The concept looks beautiful. What is it that you would hope the village can help you with, that village staff can help you with, as you continue down this journey of this project?
Um, I would hope that it will get passed by the village to actually go ahead and go through with this. Um, I'd also be asking the area businesses to partner with me. So, like, for, for example, the Hampshire Pharmacy, I'd like to utilize their, their pharmacy services for the facility to bring revenue into them. Um, and other area businesses that we could, you know, builders, anybody that we could use, I want to utilize people from Hampshire for, for the services.
Thank you so much for coming to the building. The chief, the county mayor at the chamber, she's a great resource.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask for your consideration of an ordinance waiving the requirement for a fire sprinkler system and fire alarm system at a storage, a proposed storage facility at 1380 Washington Avenue. You have a brief agenda supplement from Josh Ray in your packet. Uh, this is a request from the Zabies. I think Kelly Zabies is online. If you have questions for her. Um, and she, as typical, this is always the case in situations like this, we consulted with Chief Herman. In this case, we recommended that we do make this waiver, that the village did, and the staff, our staff agrees. So, with that, we just have, answering any questions you might have. Or ourselves comes up.
What we wanted to ask Chief Thompson, we could ask him something.
What's this gonna be used for?
This, this will be a workshop, storage facility for Jeff's construction.
If you remember, we passed, we allowed a zoning variance not too long ago for them to build a structure on a piece of property where they wanted to, to build the structure. Um, so, like, we're planning a zoning and stuff, and then this would be the sprinkler system that would be required because of commercial structure. But the same requirement does not apply to the front building because it is existing in their grand value because it hasn't been modified in top to 40%, correct?
It's right.
Sorry.
So, I see in the new drawing, the second floor is unfinished. If they finish that and rented out, who'd be tenants? Then.
Talk about the second floor.
Second floor of the building's blueprint that we have in our packet.
That is not proposed to be rented.
That's kind of.
Be rented out.
You're asking, like, great for a resident up there and rented it out.
Okay, how about a business that up there? We're okay with that?
To be honest, we never really considered it. It's not proposing this under that. Kelly? Are you with us?
Under that concept, yeah.
I mean, we're not opening the door for anybody else. Well, pretty close to the fire department, so can I waive mine, too?
Well, well, first of all, when I'm gonna make a statement, I, I never said, I would never make that statement, because you cannot depend on us being in the fire station, so that is not, that's not what I said. So, and I actually talked to Jay and the mayor about that, so that was not my.
So, fire ordinance is allowable for somebody to, above the garage, and in any instance, would it be, to be occupied?
Honestly, that's, I can't say, it's never come up since I've been here, so I haven't researched.
I actually think so, and I, if I could, ordinance before you says if there's any change to the size or the use of this garage at all, it's, it's up for reconsideration.
So, based on that, if somebody were to, to trustee Coach's point, finish the upstairs and rent it out as an apartment or some, or an office?
Well, even, even for another business, that's a change in the use, because the present use is for the use by the owner only.
I guess that's one, that was one of the questions I had, and I think you're referring to section one, R. B., where it says the A. required if any changes.
I'd use, and it's repeated in two B. as well.
Yeah, I, I guess my, I understand for this particular use, but the building hasn't been built yet, so we're talking about something that would have to be added post-construction at the cost of whoever is doing that, whether it's passed on to a new owner or not. So, two questions that I have. One, would this pass on to a new owner? The variance exists. Should they sell the property and somebody else take this on? And the second question being, in here it says an automatic fire sprinkler system on that section one B. An automatic fire sprinkler system may be required. We make that decision.
The village would make the decision, probably, I don't want to speak out of turn, but probably, again, in consultation with the fire district, the same way this decision was made. Would that be a fair statement?
So, the use would change. It would have to get reevaluated at that time, but.
Correct.
That, that's. That's fair.
What about two's initial question about the change in ownership?
Ownership changes affect on it.
So, this was.
And for legal purposes, if, if this gets waived, can they come back here and say, you guys waived, and now you're gonna make me put it in? I, I, I can't.
If the use changes, then it's null and void. But we can't just come after them after we grant this and say we changed our mind.
Sprinkler system would be more expensive than putting it in, run, and you have to factor that into your proposal, change the use, I suppose.
Does anyone else have any other questions about the ordinances presented?
I do. I mean, it's, it's listed as unfinished for that top part, but I'm assuming this is a box, this is your stuff up here, too. It doesn't say it's not gonna be used. It's just not gonna be finished.
Correct.
So.
It's no different than the attic in your garage or attic in your house.
Are, are we in this?
Hello, yeah, we can hear you. Hello.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. We were like, we're having issues.
Yeah, we were having issues trying to get in there. So, I, no, that will not be used for anything but storage. I, I, I didn't catch most of your conversation in here, so I just kind of, we cut out. We're trying to get in, I don't know how.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right. So, anyhow, we missed part of your conversation there.
They were talking about if the use were to change at another point, so, but it's covered within the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, if anything were to change, we totally understand that that would mean that if something were to change as far as the use of the building, then a sprinkler system and/or fire extinguishers and all that stuff would have to be up to code per use.
Sure.
Why don't you want the sprinkler system?
It's a construction unit.
Right.
So, if, if, it's gonna be going off all the time.
Right. The problem is I'm gonna be pulling skidsters, all my equipment in there. That will set everything off in there.
And Chief, Chief, um, the chief of police, uh, the chief of, um, Trevor and.
Yeah, so just so you could, you're referring to it going off all the time. You're referring to the fire alarm system, not a sprinkler system. A sprinkler system is not gonna go off because it's activated by heat. A fire alarm system is activated by smoke or dust.
Okay, right.
No, why wait? And I'll be honest, uh, you know, when you look at that, it's a three-car garage, and I'm going to go back to Little Wonders Daycare Center when that was built years ago. They built the business, that is fire alarm and sprinkler, that is the business. And behind it, it's a three-car, two-car garage. That was all waived. Um, this is not, this is not attached to their business. It's away from it. So it's really not, um, not since it was attached to the business, it would have to be fire alarm, spring. But it's a separate building away from it. And I look at it as a three-vehicle garage. That's the only applicable candidate. Okay?
But the business is going to be run out of there still, and part of the building is going to be used.
No, the business is going to be run out of the first floor of the front building. When this whole project started, I, I thought the house that got rezoned from our residential to business, I was under the assumption that that was probably going to have to be remodeled, which they never required a full permit because they didn't do any remodel. Okay? Obviously, if that had occurred, they would have had to put in the fire alarm system. We can talk about the sprinkler system separate because when you look at the downtown here right now, over the years, every single business downtown has been remodeled, um, for the most part, starting with the Rose Garden in nineteen ninety-five. All the sprinkler systems were waived by the building department at the time. The only thing that was required is a fire alarm system being installed in all of those buildings. Okay? Um, that's how it was back then. Then, and we can get into it, was it costs? Uh, what was it? Was it tying into the city street because the, the kind of cost getting into the, the street? So there's a lot of factors into that. This I look at as a separate building, a three-car garage, no different than a residential neighborhood. That's how I'm looking at it. But again, I understand your zoning, so.
Because it's a building. I mean, you said it would be constantly going off because you're going to be parking in there.
Sure.
Or is it just the equipment that you're pulling in and the exhaust?
Exhaust and that kind of stuff and the dust from cutting.
So I want to understand from that one's basis, because I've heard different things. I've heard there's going to be construction happening in there, getting projects. I've heard storage, I've heard parking. I just would like to know, because in here I don't see defined what the use is that the ordinance is referring to. So if we could just get clarification on what that use is.
It's a storage building. That's, that's the type of style of the ordinance.
That's correct.
All right. So there's just storage, there's no work happening in there, there's no machinery being done in there. It's just storage for equipment for the business.
Correct. Yep.
And what's going to be setting it off? Or the smoke alarm then?
The Bobcat, when you start the Bobcat in the morning to put it on the trailer, it blows diesel smoke all over.
Okay, so then that's for the fire.
That's the fire alarm, not for the sprinkler.
But it won't set.
The sprinkler only activates for.
Gotcha. Yeah, right. It has to.
Fire alarm goes off for smoke.
So that this ordinance waives both the fire alarm and the sprinkler?
That was our recommendation. We sat down with Safe Build.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions about this?
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen, an ordinance waiving the requirements for a fire sprinkler system and fire alarm system in storage building at one forty-eight.
I have a person, a second. Any other questions, comments?
I just, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned because with this particular property, you know, it seems to keep getting variances and changes and, and we've got the, the building code, we've got the zoning, we got all this stuff in our code. And there's always, there's been several then requests for variances, you know, for things to be changed, et cetera. And I'm a little uncomfortable. It, it, you know, and I know things that come up, but, um, I don't know. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with it.
You have one thing. And thank you for clarifying, chief. So in your, in your discussions, in your opinion, you are supportive of this ordinance is written. If they change usage, if, if something changes about it, it will require the, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it says it may, so I'm still unsure on who defines the may. Well, you said it'll come back to the board, but it doesn't define that.
So Mr. Hudgers is probably advising, but we're in the process of revising the fire codes with amendments. That is actually in the new codes that when you change occupancy type, then you have to go back and reevaluate this. So it is in there.
It will be in there. And so the way this is.
If you approve it, it will be in there.
The way this is written is you're, you're supportive of this.
Based on the storage, yes.
Right. Anything outside of storage, which has been defined a couple of times here.
Correct.
Then it would be, this needs to come back. Thank you.
I think another question, chief. Do we have, I mean, you just described like Rose Garden, and they didn't have to put in the sprinkler system. And then you said other businesses up and down the street, they didn't have to have any sprinklers. Are there any businesses that have the sprinkler system required by our code?
So again, let's talk about this. So in the current code, if you remodel and it's less than fifty percent of the square feet, it requires a fire alarm system. If you remodel more than fifty percent of square foot, it requires a sprinkler and a fire alarm system. Now again, I will go back to my statement, over the years, a lot of businesses went over the fifty percent, which would have required a sprinkler system. But at the time, depending on who the building department was, we've had several building departments from I C C I to B N F and now Safe Build and village board members, they waived that because of costs, but they all installed a fire alarm system. So anything that's been remodeled downtown has a fire alarm system. If you go up and down that street, I can tell you seventy-five percent of those businesses have a fire alarm system, but no sprinklers.
So why do we have the sprinkler system in the code?
Really, we're, I'll be honest with you. Um, obviously, anything new has it.
Okay.
And again, let's talk about occupancy type. We're talking storage versus mercantile, industrial, those you have to put it in. There's, there's no questions.
There's no questions.
Correct. So like all down. Anything new that you're talking about up north, that's all sprinkler and fire alarm.
Okay.
You're talking about very large buildings and so forth and so on. We have amendments to the code. In the actual code itself, a lot of that stuff wouldn't even be required, but when we threw those amendments into the codes, that changed it. Does that make sense?
So then, as you said, this is, this is being viewed as a separate three-car garage.
That's how I viewed it when I looked at it, I'll be honest.
Are there inspections that will come after it's built, after it's in there? I mean, is that?
So yes, we do. We, the fire department does annual inspections of all businesses annually. Uh, we have over three hundred that we actually do. I have a full-time fire inspector, and that's what he does. So he actually goes out to every single business and does a fire inspection.
So should, so, so, I'm not alleging anything nefarious with the Zappies. What I'm saying is that should the use change and they not report it, uh, the fire inspector would see it in the yearly inspection.
He will see it in the annual inspection. He just did, he just did the business, the house that went to, uh, business. He just did that yesterday.
Again, I'm, there's, I'm not alleging anything. I'm just.
And I'll be honest with you, we do find those things, and then we bring it to the building department's attention. So that's the building department's job to intervene and say, get your name.
I'll just remind the board, um, some of the new members that technically all the code is the village code. But we often defer like we are general to two terms. Basically, uh, private protection district executes our code for us. It's, and works correctly with State Building. So it's the village's authority that allows our protection district to do this, uh, do those inspections.
And then my board adopts the same exact, uh, amendments, and then now we utilize it with you in the village, we utilize it in the fire district.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Because we have a person, a second. So we're hearing down in this third, you go over, please.
Mr. Code.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
This folder. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
This posting. The man.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with that, we would, uh, ask that you, uh, we'll have now have a review of a concept plan for subdivision of the Rocky seventy-two development. We have with us tonight Christina Levick, uh, who's over here tonight. She'll give us a few remarks about their plans. And, uh, you also have a brief summary on your agenda in your packet.
Hello. Nice to see you all again.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Um, basically, I'm just going to recite what I had presented last year in November. A lot, a lot has changed, other than maybe some reconfiguration of the proposed lots on the land. We've had some good interest. Since we closed on the property last year, we've had some good interest in, uh, potential buyers. So the Casa Plan is basically setting us up to sell vacant land, sell lots to the end user, which is, we've been pursuing. Um, the same thing as before, largely focused on commercial users and then institutional and possibly residential still. I think last time when I saw you, you had presented, I think, I think it was just maybe three or four lots, which now for the purpose and the focus of acquiring more commercial use along the, the front, the northern part of it, but south of Route seventy-two.
See, that's behind you on the screen.
Oh, that's great. diagrams are so useful. Thank you. Um, yeah, so those, those, those northern on the, on the, those approximate twenty acres on the front would be those lots that were pursuing hopefully a, a commercial use, a buyer for that. And then the back portion, we have scheduled potentially for an institutional user, which we've in negotiations with. Hoping that that will be a successful contract, the outcome of that. But it takes a little labor on that. So, yes.
Thank you for coming tonight. Does the board have any questions about, uh, the postchanges?
Yeah, just, uh, none of the changes, but how are you feeling on as far as moving along with the development and interest levels? Are you seeing interest in the property? Are you hoping to break ground on something, or somebody breaks ground on something?
Very much so, yeah. I mean, we're, we're anxious. I mean, we were, my, my partner, I don't remember, Peter, he's a big mouth. He's, he's over it. Yeah, no, we are.
He probably own up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big surprise. No, no, we are, we are very, we are very, very anxious to move this along. And with the, um, hopefully garnering this, this end user for this southern portion, I, I'm feeling optimistic that that will trigger more interest in the property and what's available as, as soon as we get that first buyer. Um, and we are prepared to move forward in tandem with, when we're able to close, we want to move forward with that development. So, very excited, um, just as much as we were last year. There's nothing that's waned or it's very much interested in anything that's forward. And we've had some good inquiries too.
Are these, um, are these going to be standalone buildings, you know, uh, or is it like a strip mall type that's got different buildings in it? And so, because you, I just want to be just clarify.
So, yeah, I was, as far as what, when we as developers, when I'm looking at something, I'm like envisioning someone taking the hard corner, trying to make it more appealing as is, like the less work someone has to do coming in to look at it. This in my mind is what would be most enticing to some of the inquiries that we've received within the past year. Having them parceled off into these lots ready to go, um, they can either take one, or someone can come in and take two, or someone can come in and take three. Um, you know, and obviously we would have to adjust the spacing if they wanted, not quite all three, maybe two and a half or something. So as far as everything that we've discussed, to answer your question, we're envisioning standalone buildings, standalone users, um, really kind of steering clear of that strip mall look and feel.
Okay.
Yeah, most people are kind of steering clear of that also.
Our experience, by the way, is that this, this, this is what successful developers do here in Hampshire is they get the land developed, ready to build on, it's ready to break, break around, it's all zoned properly and everything, and subdivided like this. The others, there's another project in town that hasn't been able to get started because they need fifty percent of the space that's in the strip mall. So it's been two years and they can't get started.
I was just going to ask that about the zoning, because when this, when this was originally brought to us years ago, the front half, well, we changed to the, the northern half was commercial, the southern half was residential. So we did get that rezoned to, the entire thing is now commercial.
Oh, it's, that will be, that will be. That won't be part of the process. And they're not, it's not clear yet what they're going to request. Okay. It's, the village is, has, we just had a conversation with Christina this week, that village has always asked the frontage on seventy-two to be zone commercial.
Yes.
It's not mandatory.
When this originally came, we had to change that because they wanted.
It was also supposed to be, it was originally twelve acres and now it's sixteen acres, yes.
So, yeah.
But at this point, um, it's not, they have not requested zoning yet, so we're not.
So currently that southern half is still as a residential.
Currently the whole parcel is a residential.
We did, we did change any of the zoning. It was, it was.
Never got that.
We, we never got this far. It was an agreement that we had with the developer who owned the property at the time that they would market it as commercial. And then if there was a user that came, then they would go through this process of rezoning. But there was only a ten-year clause on that. So currently, it's all residential, just like the plan always was. I think, believe for townhomes or duplexes. Yeah, that, that's what it was supposed to be. And so that's what it currently is.
Okay.
The property's changed hands with the zoning, of course.
That plot was in his closet for about fifteen years until I used it because my drop closet. I figured it was past its prime.
I think that counts as zoning.
Do we have any other questions this evening?
I have one more question. But for the, um, unbuildable land, can you just tell me approximately what the numbers are on the, lot size and the usable and unusable? I just can't read the numbers even after like blowing them up.
It's like nine acres north buildable area, twelve, total buildable area is like ten point two acres. The natural, the north natural area is like two point six acres.
Okay.
No, I zoomed in. I didn't know if you knew those numbers by heart, but you'd have been squinting just like everybody.
You win.
Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Don't feel that you have to stay.
Thank you. My stomach has been growling, so I'm gonna. I was at the, I was at the jump site before I got it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Engine, you're up.
Okay, with that, we would now ask for a motion to authorize pay estimate number five, King County Estimating, and the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-two cents for work completed on the connection water main project. This will make a total of six hundred ninety-two thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents paid to date. We will still have retainage, and I wanted to say one more time how smoothly this project has gone. It's, uh, waiting for striping. I believe Tom Ed is finished their work now. And the, uh, P R D valve should begin, uh, installed in September. So this project is well ahead of schedule and managed very well.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes. I do. On line, uh, line eight and forty-eight. Page twenty-four. Allowance, uh, items ordered by the engineer. What is that?
Also.
That, that line item is, you know, to account for things that come up that weren't anticipated, so they could be covered under the contract without having to do a change order. And so in this case, as you can see in the small print under there, this was for, uh, Shoulderstone on Gas Road that wasn't anticipated, uh, to have to be included because of the way the, the pavement cross-section was. Um, when we excavated for the water main, they ended up doing additional, uh, uh, patching, resurfacing because of the, the depth of the pavement that was existing. And then they added, uh, we added Shoulderstone along the road that wasn't anticipated to be needed.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to authorize payment number five to King County Estimating. So, second. Questions, comments? Can you just go, you go over, please?
This posting, hi. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
This folder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Code.
Aye.
Mr. Matt. You know, so.
The next item, I think Jay and I have kind of tagged in. We've been doing, uh, pretty good with that. So as, as you know, our, our police chief is, uh, ready to retire. And we talked at night, um, about what our next steps would be. And, uh, my thought process behind it was the same as when we came to the understanding that we weren't prepared enough that we needed to be to hire our village manager. And by that, I mean, when we decided after seven years of not having a village manager, we decided, we interviewed and tried to come up with a list of plus things, got description and the ordinances behind it, and we.
And we came up short at the end after the first round of interviews. And then we decided in the middle of it to add, to bring in a consultant. And so, I had spoken with each of you about my feelings about the, the chief of police position and how I felt it was really important that we involve a third party so there wasn't politics involved in the decision and that there would be interviews with the police department, stakeholders, officers, patrol people. I wanted to engage the board in this decision so that it's not a political hire of any sort. And in speaking with several municipalities around the state, GovTemp, GovHR, whatever they're going by here, seems to be the leader in the pack as far as what services they offer. This is an expensive search process, but it's very thorough. They vet the candidates, they do background checks, and again, conduct the interviews according to what we want them to be with stakeholders and that kind of thing. The contract is, a little bit about it is, is inside of the package here. Again, this is a two-step process. We're looking for interim chief now that says nothing to do with this, what we're voting on this evening. But we also want to get the ball rolling on this as well. So, does anyone have any questions for me or did I leave anything out?
You covered it well.
Well, we know what the parameters of what we're looking for prior to voting.
Voting on, voting on the chief?
As far as, yeah, or that's, is that going to come up at a later date?
So.
Length of time for a town. That sort of thing and.
So, when we select the interim, that, so when we select the interim or when the candidate is presented for the interim, then that, that part of it would come out. So, as we've shared, we're looking for, you know, a three-month interim with no, with, you know, but again, we're not going to lock us into that. So, we, we envision that, you know, the drop dead date of the interim would be, you know, first of the year. We'd like to have, not, I don't want drop dead, but we, we, we'd like to have, we, we'd have, we'd like to have the new permanent chief in place by the first of the year. Okay?
For a three-month stint?
Sure. That's our plan.
So, this, this shows 14 weeks for the process and the application, which is about three and a half months, it looks like.
It's 43. Your package shows that I can work 41.
Have a question.
So, you'd want an interim during.
Just wait, George.
You'd want the interim during that period, I would assume, plus probably in before, I guess, before the chief left. So, but trustee Coe, to your question, I think this is a, looks like approximated three and a half month process. Prior to this Gov, GovHR, GovTemp, you guys have had conversations with them. Are they traditionally looking at, are they a firm that is big on promoting with them? Or are they big on hiring somebody from another department or whatever?
So, really, it really depends on the pool, if you will. I've spoken with several municipalities, one of which is Sugar Grove. They've used them repetitively. I spoke with both the village manager and the mayor over there. They, I, I, I talked to a lot of the municipalities, so forgive me. That might not have been Sugar Grove, but they, they hired, ended up hiring somebody internal at one of the, in fact, I know it was Sugar Grove. They, Gov, GovHR ended up recommending somebody internal. The internal guy did it for a little while and then left and then they used GovHR a second time and then they ended up finding somebody extra.
And by the way, speaking of the second time, there is a guarantee, a one-year guarantee if a person leaves, they give another search.
To trustee, to piggyback on trustee Coe's question, this doesn't necessarily mean we're only looking at external. Internal candidates would be eligible to apply through the GovHR and be as part of the pool of consideration.
Correct, but, but bringing this company in from the outside would provide an independent third-party view and then we put everybody on an even plank. It takes everybody out of it. So, it would take, and then so, what, what I would envision this process looking like would be after there's a pool of candidates and we get down to it. I mean, we've talked at this level about bringing the candidates before the board for a final round of interview candidates in front of the board. After we, you know, kind of got to figure out which direction we're going. The board, you know, this is going to be an open conversation. We could commit to, you know, if there's, I, I can't speculate about how many applicants there are going to be, but, you know, if there's three candidates that are really good, I could see us bringing three candidates in front of the village board and us making a decision.
For the temporary chief?
No, 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 for the final chief. I'm just, again, being transparent, we, we put out feelers for an interim chief. We haven't had very, very many applications. So, we've had a few when we're going through the interview process and when there's somebody that's worth bringing, the board will certainly do so. But at, at this time, I wasn't prepared to bring somebody in front of the board for the interim. And these, the GovHR is not part of finding that. They, we, they will provide, they've provided resumes to us of people that may be interested, as have the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association.
They're not going to help select a interim chief for the three-month period?
No, we don't have time for that. We, we just don't, we don't.
Who's going to do that?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
We are getting resumes from GovTemp for the interim position and for the associated police chiefs. And we also have some that come to us direct. Mike and I are interviewing all those candidates, but there's no fee for that. There's no fee for, for.
Understood, understood. And, and this board will have full discretion on questions, everything prior to hiring, correct?
That's up to the mayor. The mayor is applying to your consent. So, he doesn't have to bring anybody for you. He can just.
But, but I, that's not the way, again, that's statute. That's the way the statute's always been. I've never operated like that. So, if, if the board wants to, you're concerned about the interim position. If you want to question the interim police chief, I'd be more than happy to bring the interim. As a matter of fact, I feel like you probably should question the interim police chief. If that's a direction that the board wants to go, we can certainly go down that path. But that's not what we're talking about this evening. We're talking about the permanent replacement. And again, we have a timeline here of September 9th, the chief is leaving us. So, we need to have somebody in place. So, again, if the board would like the opportunity to vet or question the interim police chief and, you know, outside of the normal appointment process, because you could question him at that time and then go back to appoint him or not. However, we could do something different too. I've always been very open.
Trustee Coe, it would be my recommendation that, that the mayor not bring the candidates before, the interim candidates before.
And tell me why?
Because it's important we get somebody good on board soon, because I believe Mike and I are capable of making a good recommendation.
I'm an elected official. You're not going to make the decision for me. I'll tell you that right now. If it's your responsibility to appoint, then just do it. Otherwise, this board deserves the respect, the same way that we hired this village manager to sit there and ask questions and feel comfortable with the new guy we're going to hire.
And you know, and that's been, and that's fair and you certainly are allowed to do that. And that's why we bring them in for consent and we have the person in front of the board and you ask the questions at that time. If you want something more, more in-depth, we can certainly bring them in for, you know, final round of interview. Or that doesn't, that doesn't bother me one bit. If that's the direction the board wants to go. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't much matter to me how you guys want to handle the interim position. Okay, that's not what we're talking about tonight. That's not what we're voting on tonight. What we're voting on tonight is the, is the contract for the search for the permanent job. And that's the one where we're all going to be involved in all of that kind of thing. But again, if it's this board's thought process that you want to have a separate, like, we, I, I believe that we could do that in closed session where we could bring the candidate in, much like we did with the village. Or we, we did with the village manager. We could vet the candidate. That's what you guys want to do. I'm more than willing to do that. But I don't think that it's the village board's role to sit through all the interviews for all the interim candidates. I think that, like to Jay's point, I think we can handle that part for the guys that we're thinking, or people that we're thinking.
So, if you narrowed it to like the top two, to bring them before us.
No, I.
I feel, I feel like it's being.
Toby, I just agree with you. I disagree with you. I've been completely transparent.
Let them hire those, let them, let them.
We don't have.
Do the search for a permanent person. That's right.
Correct. But I'm not trying to railroad anybody. I've been transparent for it. If the board doesn't feel comfortable with the direction of now's your time to speed. Honestly, truly, I'm not, I'm not trying to pull a wool over anybody's eyes or railroad an interim down anybody's throat or any of that stuff.
If the board would like to do that, I would suggest that we do it at the first meeting in September. It's important we have somebody, somebody on board sooner.
I think for, so for an interim, I would have to, I think you did. If that was the direction that the village president wanted to go down, it'd have to be well sooner than that because the next, that meeting would be the day before chief re-tires.
No, we'd be done on the first.
No. Yeah, we do on the first. So, it's the week before. But I would assume you want the interim in at least at some overlap capacity to do handoffs, discussions.
Talking about sometime that week or week after. So, we can live with September 1st. The decision was made then.
Okay, understood. Have you, my question is.
Got it.
For, just for the interim, like whatever you guys decide, decide. Have you brought chief into those conversations? Because the culture of a department is important. The person that currently leads it would have a good understanding whether this person would be able, would, would come in and be a good fit in the interim, knowing they're not a permanent right then, right? But has that, I would assume.
He's met the candidates. Yeah, so far he's not been part of the interview process.
Understood.
And he's also given us very, very candid advice as to which, what he'd like to see continue in some of the things that he's done and what we should be looking for in, in, you know, his report. I mean, it's not, we're, we're not pushing him aside, but again, it's, I, again, I'm not trying to railroad anybody. I mean, I was very clear in my conversations with each of you of how the interim process would go or so I thought it would go. And then what we were going to do to find the, a full-time replacement. But I could, Toby, you're, you're pretty visibly upset. So, how do you think we can make this better?
I was told that the interim was going to be hired for a three-month stint.
Correct.
After that three months, he's gone. He cannot apply for a job or nothing. I'm fine with that. That's the way it should be. An outsider can come in and, and find out in the department what's wrong, what's right, what we should be doing, what we're not doing, whatever. And then the interview process begins to, during that period, to have a permanent.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I would say the only, my suggestion, only difference to that, trustee Coe, is that an interim still be allowed to apply as a candidate, but that they would go through consideration as anybody else would. It wouldn't be an automatic. I don't necessarily know that we can exclude anybody from applying.
No, that's, that's all I. Right, that, that's all I was saying. I, I, I'm hearing the same thing you are, trustee Coe. This is an interim for three, three and a half months, whatever this period is. At that point, a full-time decision would be made or a permanent chief decision.
So, now the only question that I have through this is how in-depth does the board want to be with questioning the interim? I mean, I, I have no issues bringing them before the board if that's what they want in a separate meeting prior to him being recommended, he or she being recommended for a buddy. Again, it's not just the state statute says I just appoint or whatever and I understand it, but I, we've never done it that way.
Well, it's actually, we're clear. You make an appointment, but it's subject to the vote of approval.
Correct.
Both for the interim, as we're talking about the interim.
Correct. I'm talking, I'm talking about how, how much the board is going to be involved with that.
I understand that.
As far as interim chief, I'm comfortable with not being a large part as far as the permanent.
Oh, as you said.
As you're saying, so I'm comfortable with three, three and a half month timeline with you guys present to us and we, we're not comfortable with that.
With what Mr. Schuster was just saying and clarifying that you can make the appointment, but the board votes on both the interim and.
Well, it has to be that way.
Sorry, I'm not. Both finished. That person, I would, I would then assume, or the case would be made, just as we do for ordinance votes or any other considerations, there would be a discussion on the candidate. There would be, the candidate would be here to answer questions, but it would still be the village board that would have to vote on to approve both candidates. In that case, I'm absolutely aligned with trustee Robinson that for the interim. Maybe be really involved in that, but for the process of a permanent replacement, I think we should follow the same process. We did.
As far as presenting an interim candidate, would that have to be in a closed session?
Nothing has to be in a closed session, but I believe it could be in a closed session.
And no, the way that, the way the closed session was explained to me was that this is a privilege of the board to put it in closed session. But again, I don't necessarily feel that a lot of this needs to be done in closed session. I mean, I just.
Well, surely the final vote.
No, 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 I know. What I'm saying as far as like the questioning of a, of a, of a candidate for a high-profile job like that, it wasn't like we, you know, went out for seven years and trying to figure out which.
No, we questioned the managers, your candidates in closed sessions.
Trust you. And if the board wants to go to closed, we can, or we can do it in open session. Doesn't matter. Like I said, I'm not, I'm an open book when it comes to this. I've been very transparent. So, I don't want anybody to have any this, or this opportunities to voice their opinion.
I do have a question. I'm wondering, are we going to be, because this is new for me, are we going to be doing an exit interview with Chief Thompson to find out, you know, his opinion? I mean, he's our greatest resource here. So, is he going to be able to talk to all of us about what are the biggest challenges that he sees our department facing in the next few years and what is his greatest goal? So, if we are aware of that and can better consider the candidates that are coming forward in phase.
That's, that's a chief question. You know how I feel.
Well, I don't know what the hiring and.
No, I mean, what I would like to have before you ask the chief is that we, we ask each, each employee to leave, regardless of why they leave. We ask them to do an exit interview or he does the exit interviews. But it's not mandatory that that person do that.
I'm not going to speak for the chief, but he's pledged that he will do anything in his power to help us along in any path. He's not going anywhere.
It's a good intention.
So, so, I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to be up, it's, it's going to be up to Chief Thompson if he wants to sit in front of the board and take those types of questions and.
If somebody would like to contact him personally, arrange a meeting or something that might be, maybe set by a good apartment. I'm sure he would accommodate you there. Don't be.
Donuts.
You mentioned the. Bourbon? I'll be there in a minute. Yes, maybe. Open door anytime.
And, and you mentioned previously tonight that the chief has shared some concerns about where he sees the department now, where he, what he might need to be doing in the future here. Somebody missed me about 10 minutes ago.
Not sure I'd use the word concern. He's given us a good update on.
Give it, yes, yes, yes. How, how much does this company, GovHR, how much do they take into account those lots?
Well, they have to. That's the whole purpose of bringing them in. I mean, and so that's, I mean, they, they, they take it, they, they take it from even our perspective at the village board level. They take those concerns into, they want to, they want to talk to even the patrol people so that they can get a good feel for the department. They're going to be interfacing with this interim chief, taking knowledge with, you know, he or she learns.
So, they are very, for lack of a better term, hands-on with our village. With identifying exactly.
They will be here during the interview process. They're going to.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a full-scale.
It's, it's kind of like those of you that were, were here when we hired Jay. I mean, he sent us a list of questions and interfaced with each one of us and did interviews and.
I think this is actually, this is much more.
Ballpark.
I mean, of the, of the cost that we went through, I think this feels like it's around the same ballpark.
I don't remember.
I don't know. I believe it, I spent about half of this. Laurie, Laurie may or may not remember.
But we already had all the, we already had the candidates too. He didn't have to go out and find the candidates. He just came in and began job.
Correct. He really just came in because.
There's a lot of services, but I think that, that is. We went through that. It was a total thing that.
So, again, I mean, I just, I want to make sure that the trustees feel comfortable because this isn't just my decision. This is going to be a big change regardless, whatever direction, and it's not something that we should take lightly, so.
I would like to just, you know, for, for the interim position, and I know that's not what we're supposed to be discussing right now, but for that, I mean, I, I trust our village manager, I trust our mayor to be able to do the initial interviews. You might have applications and, and these, you know, this is not the person, this is not. To, I don't want to say to waste the board's time because our time is still. But if in your expert opinions, you don't think someone is, you know, is going to be a good fit and the two of you agree on that. and the two of you agree on that, then there's no need to keep bringing that person forward. So if you see a number of people, I, I figure you guys will come up with the top two, um, three, if there's a whole lot that you really think have different assets and things. But, but then to bring it back to us, so I, I mean, as for us having a say, yes, we get to approve. But the, uh, the initial one, I guess, is the mayor's force forth the recommendation and that. But from what you explained then, you wanted to be a cumulative.
I, I want you guys all to have a part in. I mean, I, I just do. I think that it's going to be for the best because the worst thing that can happen, and you see the communities all over this area and probably all over the country, where the mayor picks a person and whether he's good, bad, or different. Next election cycle comes along and it was a political hire to begin with, and then he changed your positive thing that was happening in the police department or whatever is changed on when, because it was a political hire. So my goal in presenting it in the way that we are doing it and going through the search firm is that it's a board decision. It's not a political hire. And this way, so that, you know, if in three years I don't run, or I don't get reelected, or whatever, whatever happens, at least the police department, this is the subject of some next election because we, I put the wrong guy in charge. And, and I just don't, I don't think that the village deserves it. I don't think our officers deserve it. I don't think our staff deserves. So it's going to cost us $23,000, but I feel like we're doing this way. It insulates the, you know, it insulates, takes politics out of all.
And, and this, this appointment, the more permanent one, runs with the mayor's term?
Yes, the only way that we could do it is, and any appointment that I ever make is only current with the mayor's term. So the next mayor would have to consider the person for reappointment anyway. Again, it would be harder for the mayor to say, well, I don't like that guy. It's a whole board just behind, was behind the decision to begin. And I, and I really want the police officers to have a say as well, you know?
Question.
Sure.
Um, so pardon me for likening this to online matching.
That's a good part.
Because it's a. Although she's happy in there.
Yeah, way before that. So yeah, but it's a search firm, right? So they're trying to find the right thing for our community. Right? So where is that profile for our village?
Uh, they're going to create it for us. That's part of the.
Gov HR is going to create it.
Yes.
That's part of the.
They will interview all of us.
Information.
Yeah, but what information are they analyzing to come up with that? How are they, um, finding out what our needs are or what we're looking for?
So my goal.
Ask each one of them.
So, so my goal, my goal in this would be, once we sign a contract and we get, wrap our heads around what's going on, that we bring the, the search firm in to, to, to kind of tell us what the process would be and tell us what kind of information that they need to make a decision. Based on that, then we can dive in, being the board members that we are and how involved we are with the community. We, we know those answers. We just don't necessarily, this is going to sound silly, we don't necessarily know that we know them.
Right.
And so.
The question's.
Correct. So that's, that's why we bring them in.
So it does say, also, the stakeholders. Um, I think how we define stakeholder is one thing, but, um, it does say that they would do community interviews with stakeholders to determine what that.
So it's not like a free can thing. Okay, you need to appreciate, you've got this many, you know, residents, this is what you should. They will advise, but really the direction is going to come out of, of here.
I'd like to point, just because of the question, I mean, it's, it's Gov HR. The project manager, the point that they gave us, Rick Jennings, I mean.
Real deal.
Part, very impressive and, um, you know, the fact that he was a village manager and then moved to, um, to be a police chief. And I remember when that happened, because I worked for the state's attorney. Um, and so I worked with all the police chiefs. So to see someone go from manager to chief was very interesting and it worked very well. But because of his expertise from different avenues, I thought was really impressive. And then the other thing is just to see the list of people that he has helped to fill in the departments. Smallish towns like ours, as well as larger towns like a neighborville or a coria, I mean, from different areas. So, and it seems like he's, he's had a lot of success and his expertise is police. So when you see the list of all the people that he put in, they're police chiefs and, and college police, you know, chiefs of, you know, departments and stuff. So I, I was, I was impressed with that, the fact that they chose him and then the fact that I could see so many different teams work here. I, I'm supportive of, you know, the firm itself and moving forward with that end of it, so. I have a question.
Sure. Okay.
Yep.
Well, she's, she's the, she's the chairman of the police commission, so I will allow it.
So you talked about people, um, being interviewed and things. What is the role of the police commission?
So I, honestly, I don't know what that is yet. And that's, and, and so I would imagine, I would imagine that you're a stakeholder for sure, right? I, I don't, I don't disqualify that at all. What I'm saying is, is that that's why we need them to tell us what that goal is supposed to be. And so, because I, I don't, I've never hired a police chief. And I just, we've never had to. So I think that that's why we lean on them. I, I could, would imagine that the police commission would be involved in this decision. One way or another. I just don't know what that is.
That's fine. That's fair. I, we just, we're curious to see what our role would be.
With the interim, with the interim, I'm not thinking that there's one. I think we just had to, we just rip the band-aid off and do it. And then with the, with the full-time person, whoever that is, absolutely.
Thank you.
And here.
It is a rough environment out there right now. Um, being a police officer is, is, uh, is a very tough thing. And, uh, we've had so many people leaving departments and I'm interested to see how well this goes.
I hope.
And their success because, you know, people are retiring earlier and leaving. Maybe they're going from a, a bigger department where there's a lot of issues. And I would say, let's just say Chicago, to come out to a smaller town where it would be, they would be able to continue doing what they love to do, but in a smaller environment, you know, a little less stressful.
Well, we've had a lot of luck with laterals in recent years because of that same thing. You have the good officers that are wanting to leave those environments and keep doing. We've had a lot of success with laterals coming from other departments, you know? We have, what? A horrible pile. How many laterals have we had now? From all different backgrounds and they really helped our department substantially. So if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the village manager to enter into a contract with Gov HR for police chief recruitment.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Can you remember?
Just start people on roll, please.
Mr. Robinson. Mr. Spoder. Hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stewie.
Hi.
Six zero.
Okay, now we have monthly reports. Uh, I'm not going to call them individually. We spent last month, we did it where we did the monthly reports, just look over all three. And if you have questions on a specific report, ask, ask away. Just take the report you're asking about first.
I have a question for the chief on the.
True.
Incident report. On the incident report. There we go. That is the right terminology. Uh, I know on our, our department Patrol 72 in, within the village boundaries, but I also know at the construction site, there is that photo ticketing officers that, that is there as well. How does that work in conjunction with the village police department? Because I don't believe they are part of the village. They look like a state.
It, it's a state trooper. It, uh, Illinois Route 72 is a state route and it's controlled by the state police.
Okay.
We have jurisdiction connecting, uh, our, our properties, so therefore we do have some jurisdiction as far as traffic violations, but they're, but they come in and they definitely monitor the, uh, the speed zones and the, the work zones. They have the equipment. We don't get a share of that. Or.
I'm pretty sure they stamp the picture of my license.
That, that was my question because if this construction zone wasn't there, it would be our department that is making sure that is a safe thoroughfare through the village.
Yes.
Uh, but now that they have that there, I wasn't sure if that meant that.
It's, it's like extra support for the construct, for the, uh, state contracted people for that, yeah. Are you still ready to take it in the construction zone?
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions about any of the monthly reports? Okay, next we'll move on to accounts payable. You will see in front of you the big amount because of Ms. Vashwood, I'm sure. Uh, for the accounts payable personnel. Anyone have any questions about the accounts payable personnel? Linda, what did you spend the money on?
It's like.
Okay. Hearing no questions about the accounts payable personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable personnel for the amount of $224.95. Questions or comments? Mr. Parker, please.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stewie.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Spoder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
We should pass six zero. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the accounts payable, uh, regular accounts payable in the amount of, uh, just over $300,000. Sure we have some questions?
Um, you know, well, the one thing, the one thing that did pop out to me though, and I know it was in the budget as well, or the update, is the Trees Unlimited, page 81. Just, it's another $1,450 and I know we had done from last month and I know, I think we're almost like, I don't remember what the percentage just was because I read the report online and I didn't scribble on it, but, um, we're pretty high up in that budget line item for the trees. And obviously it's weather. We can't do anything about it, but, um, it's just curious then, is this from that same storm? And maybe just a comment on where we're at with that line.
Um, at this point, I, I'll comment. There, there obviously was storm damage immediately after the storm where damaged, large damaged trees were, um, outside of our particular capabilities and taken down by Trees Unlimited. On an ongoing basis, however, there are trees in the parkways, trees in alleys, alleyways, those types of things that again are, um, in, in our right-of-way or in our dedicated alley and therefore our responsibility. Unfortunately, it's, it's very difficult to tell during the budget time how many damaged trees there will be or trees that are just so large that, you know, they're outside of our capabilities. So, um, we are very, um, on a percentage basis, high into this budget line item. If necessary, we will, uh, not expend something to make sure that those damaged trees are removed because, um, you know, there's really no option. They have to come down.
Dave is real good about working with Laurie to balance every, every line items to offset anything that goes over.
No, and I understand. We've had some big storms and, um, I, I know the, just the general damage, dead tree, something falls. So I get that, but I know we did have a lot last month too with a, a lot of trees that we had to pay down.
And we've had a significant one again this month as well. Um, I believe it was $3,000. So, um, uh, as, as time goes on, we've never budgeted less than we spent the, the year before on, on the trees. Or we're learning to do that because it just seems that, you know, some of our large aging trees, especially in the older parts of town are, um, you know, beyond their useful life, so.
And thank you.
I have a question on the bottom of page 80, top of page 81. The Third Millennium Association, um, past due notices.
Third Millennium is our third-party biller for utility bills. They, they print and mail both the regular bills. And then, um, after the due date, uh, we send past due notices out to our customers that have not paid their bill in time. So this was a past due notice.
Okay.
Any other questions? Undertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of greater than $1,000, you know, $2.23. Cool. All right. First, second. You can't.
Yeah.
People that's trying to get the ball rolling.
He literally, he's like under.
So I go. He goes to be involved in the point.
All right, first and second, did I have a, and then we'll call one please, Mr..
Mr. Paul Stewie.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Spoder.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
One to pass six zero.
Village Board Committee reports, Business Development Commission.
Uh, Business Development Commission met last Wednesday, uh, and we've started to get back into and continue our discussion with the guidance, uh, Mr. Ray and Mr. Hedges of the, putting together the goals that lends us for the long-term economic development plan that we've worked together to bring to the villages and recommendation. Really, the way this is structured is we're looking at, uh, when you look at goals, it's attracting and retaining business. It's diversification of the local economy, it's enhancement of the community's image, and it's providing additional resources to businesses. So if you think of those as like main goals, we're, we're talking about trying to work towards. And the lenses are the ways that you look through to those different goals or where they put them into. We've looked at things like beautification, sustainability, land use, communication, village approvals and infrastructure. So each of those get their own discussion. We're about halfway through that process. And then what we'll do is we'll come back together and narrow it down to what has Mr. Ray's been guiding us through on, on what's a manageable set of goals for the village that we would recommend and focus on. So we had some really good discussions. I'd say the majority of the meetings on that. We also had a discussion on one of the beautificat, or one of the facade grant applicants is having a, an additional contractor look at the project and getting a quote on that project. So we were notified about that and just to, uh, let the board know, should there be any changes to what the board had approved? It was discussed that, or it was identified that that would have to come back to the board for. Because the board approved the project based on goals presented, so, uh, that was part of the discussion. And then Mr. Hedges gave us updates on, uh, the new, or what's happening on various businesses and multitude of interests that we have in our community.
I could just say, I've been talking about the Rose Garden and their, their grant. Good news is they signed a lease with a new restaurant. And, uh, it'll be a five-year lease with a five-year option. And it will be three meals a day, seven days. So it'll be American breakfast and, uh, two gentlemen that both own Mexican restaurants now will be partners in the new restaurant. So they've both had really good experience. Did we know that, that was the whole year last Friday? Did we know when they're, uh, going to start the service on? I, I believe very soon. Um, but they asked permission today. They just asked, they just stare a carpet, do some painting. It's going to require permits.
Right.
Yes. And the contractor is actually staying in this apartment upstairs, so he can be here. 24/7. He's going to be, once he gets going, they're going to go. Before year end, probably. Oh, I think so, yeah. I, I expect to see permit applications coming in next week, but.
Great.
Now, one of the things that was interesting that we discussed is it's, for those that have been on the board for a while, it's a shift in conversation is when we started this, you'll remember we talked about a brochure and we talked about how do we, businesses interested in Hampshire. And we have a, uh, embarrassment of riches at this time, that there's not a short, there's not a, uh, lack of interest in our community. So then the discussion started to be more around, how do we ensure we're growing in the right ways and diversifying the economy and attracting the right businesses and identifying land use and things like that, which is a lot different discussion than we had before when we said, how do we market our, our, our community for businesses? So frankly, it has been a little.
You had all those inquiries coming in. They just, there was nobody here to listen. That's all it took.
Any questions?
And the market didn't change.
True.
Yeah.
Yes, true.
Any questions?
I do. Um, we had heard that there, uh, there was interest that was going on up and down State Street, but that people wanted to wait to see what's street skate open. And so I was just curious if there's been an increase in people inquiring.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We have several people right now. The important thing is several buildings are not listed. In the past, we've had trouble getting orders to list their property. We still have one who's not listed. But he's been very cooperative. We have people lead. So now we have listings. They're seeing the listings. They're calling us, asking what the rules are with the village. So yes, we're, we're seeing a lot more interest in downtown just in the last 30 days.
And that's purchasing or just leasing or?
Mostly purchasing.
Mostly purchasing.
And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Hedges. And thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Hedges, do you want to speak to the grand opening of of the downtown area in conjunction? Because I know that it'll be before our next meeting.
Sure, I was going to mention that in the announcements, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We can do that. Actually, the mayor has, Mayor Reed has arranged for a dedication with the clock.
So.
It's now 1:00 o'clock. That'll be at 11:30 on Sunday.
On the 28th, prior to 28th. Great day's break. We're gonna, we're gonna dedicate the clock. I guess the the whole reasoning for this is so Streetscape's not going to be done. We know that Streetscape's not going to be done by then. Okay, but the family that donated the clock has been waiting over 20 years for that clock to be installed. And that family will be in town. So we're, so it's our intent to do the dedication off the clock at that time. And then speaking with Jay this week, I'm sorry. It's been a long week. It's been a long week. It's our intent that once all the plants get planted and the all.
Light holes.
Light holes get in and stuff like that, that we'll we'll work with the chamber to do a ribbon cutting for downtown.
I I just didn't think we wanted to do a ribbon cutting and have everybody else say, oh, so it's finally done. This is what it looks like. The plantings are going to be.
So it'll be a clock dedication.
Yes.
To Coon Creek, following in late September after.
Well, I expect you may be around maybe Trump or Trump time, maybe one of those chamber events or one of those events. Okay.
We just, we want to do something official, like, okay, it's it's really done this time. You know.
Can I ask along the lines of that? And just because it's Coon Creek and the parade and everything going on, is that going to be enough time? I mean, my thought is, should it be 11? And I don't know if any of this is printed, but.
Let me explain that because I was concerned about that myself. The invitations already went out. Didn't the board all receive invitations? This board? Supposed to.
I don't know. Talk to the, talk to the.
I'm talking to her right now. Linda, please send those same invitations that you sent to the previous board members to the current board so they have them. And I am a little concerned about the timing, but well, we'll make it work. We have to. It's going to be kind of rushed though, Mike, because we have to be at the parade lineup starts at 11:00. We have to be ready to go at 11:45.
So we'll move to 11:00.
We can do that. Would be much better.
There's not a whole lot of people that responded anyway, so we just tell them it's 11:00.
Okay.
Carl, is that okay if we do it at 11:00 instead of 11:30? Parade starts at noon.
I just, I was just concerned about Smallville family kind of being rushed and then we had a lot of questions. I will wait for announcements. I have one thing I asked.
Oh, we're doing, that was BDC. Sorry. Sorry. All right, Public Relations?
No, it's great.
Okay, good. How about, how about Public Works?
Go report.
How about budget?
Okay, it's ready for three.
All right, good. Then we're going to go with announcements. So do you want to start or do you want?
I would like to ask, how many of you plan to be in the parade? We had all of you last year. 100%. Will you all be there? Those purple shirts are, so don't take one if you're not going to be in the purple.
So the question is, is who wants to drive the truck this year?
I'm sorry, I didn't get any, I didn't get any RCPs there. Are they going to be there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a couple of you. Great.
Yeah.
Can my son drive?
He can be on the boat.
I asked if he could drive the truck.
That's for the chief.
Is it going to be open bed? Can I drive it?
That's all a problem.
It might snow there.
I think Ryan has other duties on that day.
They actually have to work. Well, somebody has to. I can do it. I don't care.
I'll get something out to you beforehand, but we'll probably end up meeting on Washington Avenue down by St. Charles.
Wherever, wherever we're going. Last year, we were down that way.
He doesn't know yet.
No, but last year you put us all together and that was a long stretch. So wherever he says we're going to go, we'll just get it out to everybody before.
We had five vehicles in the parade, by the way, three, three of our big trucks and utilities department will have a truck and then we're solving.
So on that same end, I sent an email out, Coon Creek's looking for foreigners on that Thursday evening, if anyone's available. Let me know. That would be really. That would be great. We had a good time doing it last year. I don't think that we were too unrealistic. The, we should, you should have all gotten invites to the Big Timber Elementary School ribbon cutting. That's on the 30th. Don't forget to RSVP. It's not ongoing. There's that. Tomorrow's cop on top, on rooftop, cop on a rooftop. And Mayor Zembedi and Gilbert's has caused all kinds of trouble already, so alleging that we're not going to raise as much money as them, so I'd like to wipe the floor with Gilbert's this year, if that's possible, same. And what else do I have here? Like to congratulate trustee Paul Stiney on her election as treasurer of the state Republican Party. Is that what your title is now? Do we have to like genuflect when we see you now?
No. But thank you.
Other than that, I don't, did I miss anything, Ms. Clark? She kept poking at me to write stuff down.
The opening day for the new bar.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was moved to, it was September 8th now. It was supposed to be this evening, but there were some things that happened. So Harsh Lounge will open on September 8th.
Can I add, school went off on a great foot this year's first day of school. I would really like to thank the police department chief. I was personally at Hampshire Elementary dropping on my two. And the police presence, you greatly appreciated. And all your officers, Chief Herman left with a fire from some ambulance, some fire truck. The kids loved it, but it made the parents feel this is a safe place to go to school. So thank you so much. And not only that, but thank you for having those officers in the school because you are, you and your officers are building a very positive relationship with every one of those kids. And that's what kids need to see. They need to, they need to see that the police are our friends. So thank you so much for all you do for the kids. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Can I piggyback off that just because it's a question? I mean, because the Big Timber school opened and there was all this concern about walking across Big Timber. I'm just curious to see how it.
Well, depends if we may ask. I think it went well. There were some people in Lakewood that didn't think it went well. So I've been actively involving the conversation out there. We made some pretty quick changes. The crossing guard didn't start till 7:45. We worked with the school district and they said 7:30 and we're like, okay, how about for seven for now? So now the crossing guard gets there at 7:00 o'clock every day. Public Works acted pretty quick and painted some yellow lines on on the sidewalk. So it's really the problem that we're having on Lakewood, not a problem, the challenge is, is that that subdivision isn't used to how to use a crosswalk. And believe it or not, there's a correct way to do it. And so it's more of a training issue. So we've got a really great crosswalk. His name is James. He wears a bright yellow vest. It's got like the world's most awesome mustache next to Mr. Kelly. And.
Make sure that's 30 minutes.
Anyhow, anyhow, he prefers that you wait for him to get out into the middle of the crosswalk and then wait to get, you know, allowed into the crosswalk so he can ensure that the, you know, it's a safe, safe and and all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of education that has to happen out there.
Crosser can sure that traffic stops too.
Sure. Sure. But they, again, it's just education.
Yes, yes.
And so we've had some, not malfunctions with the beacons, but the beacons only flash for a certain period of time when you.
That's been extended, by the way, to a full minute now. It was only 30 seconds.
So it was originally 30 seconds. And so somebody always had to continually hit the beacon button. And so they've extended it to a minute, but they're looking into actually doing like they have in town here where they throw a switch and the beacon stay blinking. We're engaging in conversations at the county. And there was also one of those message board signs that was put out on the Big Timber alerting people of the changes because the signs went up right before the day before school started. So a message board went up on September, or Big Timber there, alerting people of the changes. And so it's just, it's a lot of education that has to happen out that way. And the county's been pretty receptive to our changes. And I think Jay was ready to kill me on the first day of school.
Is there anybody, have any police instances?
Well, that was one of the criticisms, to be completely honest, is we have police cars out that way. And they were like, well, what the heck are the police doing? They're not getting out of their cars. But so when I was, I stopped out there on day one at dismissal and a guy was giving me a hard time because the police weren't outside of their car. Well, when you're trying to catch people speeding through the intersection, you can't run over to your car to run radar when you think they've bought you pants. You have to be in your car. So as soon as I explained that to the person, he was giving me a little bit of a, I don't want to say attitude, but he didn't necessarily agree with my thought process. But then as soon as I said that, man, the cop hit the, Cody, he was smiling. He hit the gas and and got the guy doing 55 miles an hour. So, you know. And then Chief, Chief shared a story about your, your friend on the motorcycle.
Yeah, I had a guy that stopped at at the crosswalk, looked at me and rubbed it up and took off. And I just kind of smiled at him because Cody was down the street about an eighth of a mile. And and got him a 52 and a 20 with suspended license plates and license. So we got in a fight for a while and we had him for a while. It was just.
That's what schools don't take it to, right?
Oh, yeah.
You don't get any of those in your career like.
Did you go back and wait?
Oh, I did. I stopped because there was two spots. I rolled down my window and went.
So along your lines of state, I know we don't own this as a villager or police department, but you see a lot of communities have the the trailer that displays your speed.
They're about, what, 10, 15 grand out?
Yeah, something like that. Around nine, nine to 12. And you can do it with a traffic count for you. It can give you a lot of data. It's expensive.
It is expensive. I don't know. I'm not suggesting buying.
Well, he's been, he's been wanting one since the beginning of my time on the.
No, and I know and I agree. It's a good thing to have, but in in the short term, you've got a brand new school, a brand new speed limit with uneducated drivers and crosswalks or crossers. And would it be feasible to maybe rent something like that for the short term?
Yeah.
Every single thing we close in that right away has to be approved by the K County Board. Okay. We negotiated with them right now for three months. And so and now we, I've gone back to them again, based on Chief's recommendation and Mayor's. And said, we think there are a few more things that could be done. I don't want to say should be because I don't have any liability issues, but there's more things that we can enhance. But and I will say that the number two guy was was out there on first day. And I think he saw some, he saw some. So we have a meeting Sunday to to kind of debrief on what's going on. Great. The schools and the crowd, we built, we was paying for it and engineered everything that was approved by K County. County and us. There's four parties and stakeholders and that will all be meeting next week to talk about what is possible, what can be done. It would, it would, they would have to approve that to put that up there. We've actually asked them that. That's one of the things they said no to all along, from the beginning.
How did D300 feel about, you know, the day and?
So I had an opportunity to speak with their safety officer the other day. I shouldn't have apologized. I had an opportunity to speak with Todd because I've known him for 10 years or whatever it was. And he had asked about how the community's dealing with it and stuff like that. And so they are seeing I I shared this with Jay and I'll share it in open session. And I've shared it online as well. The community over there is mad for a lot of reasons. One reason is, and it depends on who you talk to, the reason why they're mad, right? What? They're mad because their kids got ripped out of the school that they've been holding, which is an understandable thing. They're mad because the busing is changed. Some of them are mad because they don't feel the crosswalk is safe. Some aren't mad about any of it. Some are mad about one reason or the other. And so I think there's a lot of mixed emotions coming out of it. So the only, the only complaint that I am aware of from the school district was the one that was sent on the first day of school.
To Todd.
To Todd and then forwarded to us. So we, you know, they're, they're very cognizant of it, but it's also, I mean, for those of us that have been involved in anything as far as starting a new process, so like, again, it doesn't have to do with anything being in education. It's never smooth on the first day. And so there were some parents or community residents that had unrealistic expectations on the first day of school. I'm sorry, I'm just going to call it what it is. I think everybody did the best they could. But until they actually saw what was happening in front of them, I don't think they can, they can only complain so much. And so I think that now on what, day three, day three, I think is going way better than day one. And I, and I don't think anybody's really complained about it, but I still think that there are some people that are just inherently upset with the situation, some of which is outside of the village's control. Accurate or?
Yeah, I was only up there the first day, actually the second day. And I, I spoke to a lot of people. I mean, the first day was so much fun because I think there were grandparents and there were groups of five in strollers and dogs with students. So we had hundreds of people crossing that day. Maybe hundreds, at least a couple hundred, I would say, total. I think the numbers went, the next day, by the way, the first first child showed up at 7:30, by the way, our crossing guard was at 7:00. So the first day, everybody was early. And the second day was kind of back to normal again. I suspect by this morning.
Yes, it was.
Even fewer numbers.
Absolutely. Next week, you're going to start to see a kind of drop off.
It was really kind of fun. I spoke to one mom because she, she, I can say her child, he was probably seven or eight, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. I don't have a good judge of that. She walked into the crosswalk, let him cross by himself, then watched him go down there and turn around and start crying. So. I said, I'm sure they'll, it'll be just fine.
Thank you for all the.
Any? Anything else?
Just one, I was driving through town a few days ago. I happened to be behind a Dodge truck. And I know the trees are growing out and this truck hit these branches, both top three, not just.
Whereabouts?
Wondering what's going on.
Where were you talking about?
I didn't, whereabouts? Back, yeah.
On State Street?
Yeah, on State Street.
But south or north?
To the south.
Just front of the middle school?
No, after the school, after the school and coming to the chief. I turned, I turned on, and I come down and that's where I saw, I was behind the truck.
They take a look at it.
Yeah, just sort of bringing up.
Could be more tree trouble.
Yeah. I'm not sure what it is.
All right. If there's something else to talk about?
Sure. Thanks. I would be remiss not to congratulate our president and your fellow.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That was awesome.
He stole my best friend, Tom Skilling.
I did get to meet Tom Skilling. So everybody's jealous.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a really, really unique opportunity. I don't know how I can top it.
Eric doesn't text me at 8:30 at night very often, but he did text.
Yeah, I think you said something about.
I know that guy. See if he remembers yours.
All right. Jonathan Alph?
Just one last thing, just a real big boost for Coon Creek. Get as many people as you know to come out to it to really support it. Many people have worked on the committee before, but it's, it's a year-long process, once a month, kind of coming out, pulling it together. And a lot of work goes into it. And you can bring extra people and kids and family, et cetera. Get your neighbor to come and, you know, have some beverages and watch some bands. It it's such a feeling of community. And last year was my first Coon Creek though, so it was all new to me. But the best part was watching the community and people coming and meeting each other. And it's, it's, we do that once a year and it really should be, and that's, that's my shameless one.
See y'all at Coon Creek. With that, motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Questions, Thomas? Ms. Clark?
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Hammond. Oh, Mr. Stiney.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Phil.
Hi.